Good evening and welcome to the planning, Glacksford Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, January 28th. Could we please have a roll call?
Chalmers?
Present.
Commissioner Swisher?
Present.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Present.
Commissioner Campbell?
Present.
And Commissioner Hull? I think you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. So to start, I wanted to see if we had any public comments on matters not on the agenda. We have one person in the room tonight. Are you here for one of the matters on the agenda? Okay, thank you. What about Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you want to provide a public comment, please raise your hand.
Nothing, okay, great, thank you. In that case, we'll open the public hearing. We have three matters on the agenda tonight. And... Oh, I'm sorry.
I have nothing to report, so you could skip that. Thank you, though.
I must have telepathically known that. Okay, so moving, we will reopen the public hearing. The three matters on the agenda tonight. The first one is 15 Hazel Avenue, PLN 24-062. If we could please have the staff report.
I might be able to just use my finger if you get it. Yeah, okay. So...
Are you accusing yourself of Hazel as well as?
Oh, not ruining it. No, not Hazel, sorry.
Does it go away? Like, why is it showing your full screen? Oh, it's the wrong computer. Okay, thank you. Oh, so I can't reach that one, right?
It's sharing on this one.
So I should be able to move it on this one. Okay, great, thank you. So this is an application for variances, and any application for a variance also needs an application for designer view for an existing structure at 15 Hazel Avenue that was originally built as an accessory structure for the adjacent lot. And in the intervening time, it was determined that this is a separate legal parcel. The property's changed hands a couple of times, and the current owner would like to receive approval to legalize it as a single-family home. And so they're requesting variances from parking to not provide any parking at the site due to the distance. I'll go into it more with other slides. They're asking for a front setback variance to build a new deck in the front yard, and then they're asking for a natural state variance to exceed or not meet the requirement for natural state, proposing 2,330 square feet of natural state where 3,372 square feet are required. And then designer view because design review is required for all discretionary applications. The original site was owned by 24 Laurel. So 24 Laurel owned, which is a house some of you were on commission when it was approved, but it's a new house under construction, 24 Laurel. The sites were thought in the past by the city to have been combined or merged. And so 24 Laurel had a single-family residence and a second unit, and then received approval to build an accessory structure, what is now 15 Hazel, as an art studio back in the 70s. Over the years, people have put in kitchens, and then they've been removed, and there's been code enforcement action, just on and off since it was built, because people have wanted to use it as a single-family residence or rented it out. And the prior owner of 24 Laurel and 15 Hazel came in about 2019, and then received a certificate of compliance to demonstrate that the lot was a legal lot. So 15 Hazel could be developed as a single-family residence. As a condition of determining the lot is a legal lot, they were required to get approval to make it a single-family residence, to come through this process, like the current owner is doing. And parking would be required unless they get a parking variance. So at this time, 15 Hazel's its own separate legal parcel, the existing art studio structure is there. It's the prior owner did a lot of work to it without permit. These are the elevations that are proposed, but a lot of this work exists today. So the changes that are proposed to the existing structure are the front deck. They would be removing some balconies that were added without permit. And then on the south side, they'd be modifying the entry. So currently, it's on the north side of the residence, be proposed on the south side of the entrance with a new path to the entry. And then the interior would be remodeled to create a three-bedroom residence. Currently, I guess you could say it's two-bedroom. And but there's two bathrooms, some of the bathrooms in the kitchen, and a lot of the work interior was done without permit. So that would all be legalized with a permit for this residence. This is showing the natural state. So the site would comply with natural state, except that the prior owner, or some prior owner, had built a retaining wall in the rear yard to create a level area for 24 Laurel. And then there was a easement granted for exclusive use of it by 24 Laurel. So now that takes away a lot of the natural state from this site. And so they're asking for a variance from natural state, since they can't, they can't restore that to natural state with what they have proposed. And then the only other change is really, like I mentioned, is a front deck here that I'm showing in light yellow, and then a new path to the new front door that would be when you're facing the house on the left side of the house. The prior owner had started building stairs and a path without permits, which, you know, somewhat state of partial completion right now at the front of the site. The stairs start around the same area, but then the path would cross the site over to the left side. So that needs a setback variance, because the front property line, which is hard to see, there's a blue line there. The front property line is about 20 feet from the edge of the roadway. There's a really wide right-of-way here of 60 feet. And so the property line is really far from the edge of the roadway. And it's not land that the property owner owns or the city owns. It's actually, the underlying land is owned by, I think, heirs of the subdivider of this original subdivision. So it's not, it's not this owner's land to develop that area between the street and the front property line. And the actual roadway is about 12 feet wide. It's not, not very wide at all. And this site slopes very steeply from the roadway. So even if it was closer to the street, it's a very steeply sloping site. But there's also no neighbors directly across the street that are taking access off of Hazel here. So there's a lot of right-of-way area that's available for parking for the residents. And as I mentioned, this house has been used as a single-family home by people on and off over the years. And that's where they presumably parked. I wanted to show you this proposal. The prior owner had come up with a plan to put parking. And so if someone were to put parking here, if they wanted to provide it on-site, they'd really have to put it where the deck is proposed, which is at a pretty high elevation. They were hoping to acquire that land from the person who owns it, and then build it between the street and the house. And so it involves a steep driveway. This is showing a 13% driveway up to a single-car garage. And then it entails a lot of excavation. So this, this actually doesn't show really high... Oh, maybe those are high retaining walls. It's basically a buried garage, even in that area between the front property line and the street. I think the dash line, that second line that you're seeing, they're trying to show that's the area of bedrock. So it would entail a significant amount of grading, which if someone was coming in for a new home, might be warranted. Like, the 24 Laurel house is a brand-new house, and they wanted to provide parking on their site. And they're doing, they bought that land, the area between the property line and the street. And that's where they are building their driveway and they're proposing parking. For what's being proposed here, which is really no construction other than an interior remodel, it seems like an excessive requirement, especially given how much parking is available on the street. And without the expansion of the house, staff didn't think it's warranted to provide parking. Plus, it's essentially impossible without acquiring ownership of that strip of land. Because to go up even further, I should have a pointer, but this project was proposing an addition in front of the house, and that's where the garage would have to be if it was meeting this, it would still be in the front setback, but it would be on the property. And I don't, like, the driveway to get up there would be really, really steep. I'm not even sure if that would be possible. So again, they're, they're asking for parking variance, a front setback variance, a natural state variance, and designer view. And staff is recommending approval of the project based on the findings in the staff report and the conditions of approval. There was a condition, it's condition number 29, that the fire department wanted the bay trees and acacias and other fire hazardous species to be removed near the street. And the applicant did indicate that some of the neighbors would prefer to see some of the screening vegetation remain. The fire chief, I believe, okayed some of the trees staying if they were limbed up and kept clean. So I would recommend that, just changing that condition number 29 to add, if required by the fire department, any acacias, and then the rest of the condition, so that if for some reason they want to preserve the trees and are allowed to preserve the trees, they could. And that concludes my staff report, unless you have any questions for me.
Thank you very much. You have a question?
I do. In the history of the house, at one point, there was something like $22,000 worth of fines that were levied on it. Have those been, they're all been paid up?
They have not been paid. I imagine we would demand payment prior to issuing a building permit for the project. But the applicant, the applicant and property owner has already requested the city to waive them. So I think he will ask the city council to waive them. We've, our staff has spent so much time on this house. So my inclination is not to support that request, because hopefully, they negotiated that in the sale, because it was very clear, we recorded it against the property.
So the new owner is not the one who incurred those fines?
No.
The prior owner?
Right. It was definitely, the new owner did not do any of the work without permit, and has already submitted building up permits to try to legalize the work.
Is that something we should address tonight, though?
You can make any, a recommendation, if you wanted to, to the city council. I don't have any facts to present to defend how much time we spent on it between code enforcement and staff and city attorney time, because we've incurred a lot of expense for this one that I would love to recoup.
Okay.
And perhaps they've already negotiated that, and he got the price drop by that amount. So I don't know that. But you, you can make a recommendation. It's not your decision to make to waive it. It would be the city councils.
Got it. Great, thank you. And I just wanted to clarify. So what they're asking for here is no parking? So they'll be, they'll have, they'll be...
No parking.
Okay.
Or no off-street parking, just dedicated for the site? There's parking on the street.
Right. And there's no parking on the site, because it's too steep?
Correct, yeah.
Any, any other questions?
Just in terms of, well, is the architect going to make a...
The, the property owner's on Zoom, I believe. And so he can, he can speak and answer questions.
I was just curious about the location of the new, I mean, it's kind of a weird design. And the new entrance is going to be on the far side now? It's, it's like...
I think the intent was just because it would, it helps create additional bedrooms.
Right. So one, the, the old, the, the entry door that's current is now going to enter into a bedroom?
Right.
The new thing?
Right.
Unusual, okay. But okay. I'm just curious, design standpoint, I don't know.
I, I think it gives them an opportunity to mitigate some of the steepness of the stairs, because it's...
That's true.
You kind of, you kind of want to rope up when you go up there.
Yeah, right now, you have to go very straight. It's not a great entry on the right side, where you can make it a little more gradual on the left side.
And then...
And the owner has his hand raised. So if you want to let him speak after your questions, he's, he's available.
That's all, question.
Yeah, I think we should, if the owner's on Zoom, and if he would like to make his presentation. And I also wanted to understand the deck, the deck's being expanded, right?
So, right, there's a deck proposed off the front of the residence, which would now be coming off of the living space and, I believe, a bedroom also. And one of the reasons that it makes sense is because the site has no flat living, living area that's adjacent to the living spaces. So there is, there is a deck, partial deck that was built without permits there right now, and an area was graded without permits. This would be, this would be at least at the level of the living space, so there'd be indoor/outdoor space associated with, right at the same level as the residence, especially because the only other flat yard area is that area in the backyard that they're, has, is encumbered by easement.
Got it. Okay, thank you very much. So if we could please have the owner speak and make their presentation?
You should be able to speak now. There you go.
Can we see them on video? Is that possible?
I don't know. I can see you guys.
Alex, you can't see them on video?
Presenters visible? Oh, we, we, can you share your video? You might be able to.
It's, it's not a big deal if you can't.
I don't know how to do it. It says my name, and I don't know how to...
Yeah, no worries. Okay, please proceed.
So my name's Jeff Greenberg. Thank you, guys, for giving me the opportunity to present this. I will give you just a little bit of background, and then I'll address some of the questions, which are very interesting. And I think you guys touched on some of the important points. I live in the neighborhood. I live about five houses up the street from this, at 85 Laurel. I used to live even a little closer at 60 Hazel. But I moved because I wanted a pool, and the house across the street from me came for sale. I walk by this house probably twice a day with my dog. And I've been watching, you know, for years as it's been rented. And for the last three or four years, it's mostly been a short-term rental for people in the neighborhood that were doing construction on their houses, despite Glacksford not allowing short-term rentals. I've watched the owner, the prior owner do a number of unpermitted and very wanky improvements. And I just recently was able to purchase this property from the bank, who took it back and had been sitting on it for a little while. The house to the left, if you saw Elise's shot, the house to the left is a beautiful new construction. Chuck and Julie Templeton built a beautiful house. And the house immediately to the right, Maya Kristen just bought from the Turners, which is also one of the most beautiful houses I've ever seen. And then the Honders just bought the house behind us at 24 Laurel and tore that down. And they're building a large house there as well. This is clearly the smallest, least expensive house in a great neighborhood. It's walking distance from town, and I think it'll be a great rental that a family can live in and be part of the neighborhood. And that's my plan. Like Elise said, my goal is to bring the house to code and remove all the existing issues. I've already submitted for the encroachment license and encroachment permit, which are required for the stairs that are in front that were done without a permit. I've already spent a fair amount of time discussing this with the building department. And I've submitted some plans to bring stuff up to code, like the electrical, from the building department perspective. But the parking, as Elise mentioned, it's a hillside. If you were to actually figure out how to do a garage, it would be extraordinarily expensive. But you'd have to be able to buy the property that is in between the street and my property. And there's so much street parking right there that I just, it becomes a hardship to be able to try to build something when there's ample, that you could fit 50 cars across the street for a number, you know, it goes from all the way at one side to, you know, hundreds of yards down. And also, like Elise said, I'm proposing putting a deck on the front. The prior owner, when he sold 24 Hazel, he gave them an exclusive easement to basically use my backyard. So even though you can see that level grass area, I don't have the right to use that. That's an easement for 24 Hazel. So I'm trying to create a little bit of outdoor space by building that deck, which goes into the front setback. But the house is located so far away from the street because of the property in between my property and the property line, that, that deck will be, you know, significantly far away from the street. And the natural state is really created, the, the issue is also that exclusive easement. I would be happy to comply if I could do something with the backyard, but I, by right, don't have the ability to change that grassy area. So those are the three variances, the parking, the deck setback, and the natural state. And changing the stairs to the left is mostly because of the grade. It's really steep going up the right, and it's hard to walk up. But if you change to the left side, it's a much less steep approach. And it also helps with the new layout of the house. And, you know, whether I leave the door that's in the bedroom for egress, or change that to a window, you know, I'm thinking of potentially having a little teeny deck kind of sitting area outside the bedroom. But that's neither here nor there. It's mostly to change the front door to make it easy to get to the house with that steep slope. So I guess that's pretty much all I have. Happy to answer any additional questions that you guys may have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Greenberg. Do we have any questions for the applicant?
Actually, so is the, you had a structural engineer look at the house? I looked, I noticed the, is it cantilevered with those, those posts on the north elevation there? Is that, it seems a little sketchy from a, from an earthquake standpoint? Have you had it all checked out? I worry about your safety, that's all.
Yeah, I've, I've had my structural engineer prior to the purchase come out. And I think when we do submit for the remodel permit, there are one or two structural augmentations he's going to recommend to some of the, the footings, right where that cantilever is that you're talking about?
Yeah.
They, they didn't do much as far as augmenting that. And so he thinks we'd be better off putting an enhanced footing around that area. But I'm trying to follow the procedure and first get it approved, and then go through the various building permits.
Yeah, makes sense.
And I assume you were aware of the penalties that were imposed on the property for non-compliance?
Yeah, I mean, they're recorded against the property. I have an extensive file. Like Elise said, I, I think that the reasonable thing would be to have Elise go back and look at how much staff time is actually incurred. A lot of these are treble penalties for the guy, you know, they sent him a letter every month, and he never answered or complied with them. So a lot of the penalties are just adding up. But what I'm hoping to do is, after we ascertain what the actual time spent is, then to see if the council will reduce the amount to cover, you know, staff's costs.
Great, thank you. Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, do we have any comments in the room? No one? Do we have any comments on Zoom?
If you're on Zoom and you want to comment, please raise your hand.
No one? Okay, let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Wagstaff?
Okay, well, I've, I've looked at, I walked that road fairly frequently, and looked at that house many times. And it's kind of an interesting house. I think trying to put a garage up there would be an absolute epic, beside the fact that you'd probably kill yourself trying to back down the driveway. So, and there always is street parking there. So I don't have a problem with that. I, I think I'd, I'd like to see it done.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Hull?
I agree with Commissioner Wagstaff. I think adding, you know, forcing them to add a garage would be unrealistic. And like, like Commissioner Wagstaff, I was like backing out of that. No. So I don't, I would not have any issues with the, the variance. I could make the findings for the parking variance.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Swisher?
Well, I'm going to read from this, that Commissioner Chalmers gave me to use the right word. "I can make the findings because," I agree with Hull and Wagstaff here. Parking is plenty there. There's, there's no reason not to have, that you, I wouldn't, you know, you don't want to build a garage there. So that's great, no problem with that. Also, I have no problem with the setback variance. It's minimal. And, and the same with the natural state, since it's a permeable area. I am really curious about the history of that easement. I mean, I think that's an unusual situation. But I mean, maybe at some other point, it's not, it's not relevant to this. So I can make the findings for this.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell?
I don't think I have any further comments. I'm in agreement with the other three.
And for myself, yeah, since Commissioner Swisher and Commissioner Hull were very eloquent with their, with their wordings now. I, I agree with them. I think we can, we can all make the findings for the application tonight. And if somebody wants, the only thing I would add for the commissioner, the commission to consider, I, we need to make the adjustment to condition 29. But also, I saw that staff recommended whether, whether we keep, limit the variance to a three-bedroom residence?
I believe that's in there.
And is that something we wanted to just, make sure everyone read that, and if that's something we want to consider?
So under condition two, it says the variance, parking variance is granted based on the scope of the project, which does not include any additions, retains the existing residence, and is limited to three bedrooms, and a future demolition or significant addition to the residence that requires discretionary review shall require approval of an amendment to the parking variance.
So it's sort of if they come back for something further, then we put in a, we put in a parking requirement at that point?
Yeah, let's say somebody wanted to do the same thing they did with 24 Laurel and tear the whole thing down and build a new house.
Right. So maybe we reference that then as well?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. In that case, can somebody make a motion, please?
Brock, you're good at that.
I put it on the front page for you.
Okay, yeah. I would recommend approval of PLN 24-062, which is 15 Hazel Avenue, design review, parking variance to allow no off-street parking, front yard setback variance to add 277 square-foot deck at the front, and natural state variance, including, and then...
An amendment?
No combustion, well, trees will be removed if required by the fire department.
So an amendment to condition 29 and to keep it as a three-bed?
Yeah.
And do, do you want to add then? We don't need to add that?
It's already specified.
Okay.
Yeah, as required by the fire department.
Okay. Can we have a second, please?
I'll second.
Can we have a...
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
Commissioner Hull?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously. There is a 10-day appeal period. I just need to appeal by filing a letter of appeal and the appeal fee with the city clerk.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item on the agenda. Just going to give staff a moment. Oh, it's just the... Ready? Okay. So the next item on the agenda is 3 Heather Way, PLN 24-055. Could we please have the staff report?
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. The item before you is PLN 24-055 for the project at 3 Heather Way. For a bit of background, we've got a Google Street View... For a bit of background, we've got a Google Street View of the property on the left and then the overhead view on the right. It's at the corner of Heather Way and Diane and the Heather Gardens neighborhood. One second, there we go. So a bit of a, a bit of history here on the project. It's, it's been going on for a few years now. In April of 2020, the commission approved PLN 19-50, which approved a 550 square foot addition to the existing structure for a total floor area of 3,061 square feet. It was a 0.45 FAR. In January of 2023, the bill, there was a building permit issued for a new 482 square foot accessory dwelling unit that met all the requirements of state law, did not need discretionary approval by the commission. Uh, and then most recently in October 2024, work was halted on site once it had become clear to the city staff that construction had exceeded the approved scope of work. The applicants were given the option to either remove the unpermitted work or apply to legalize what had been done. And clearly they have chosen to apply for legalization. Uh, so with all that being said, the project seeks to legalize approximately 172 square feet of these unpermitted additions and three new dormers on the roof. All right, here's a site plan that kind of washes out, my apologies. But this is the home down here and the garage and then the ADU here on the right. Uh, one thing just for the commission to note, when this project was originally approved in 2020, it had a two-car garage and then the ADU was 482 square feet. It's since been reworked, it's a one-car garage. It still meets the required parking and the ADU is 600 square feet. And then here you can kind of compare what was approved by the commission and then what has been constructed on site. And this is the first level. You can see there's a little added, uh, floor area here on the bottom. And then on the second floor, again, there are some, uh, it was, all these additions were basically to make the wall planes the same. So these two, uh, projections here on the, on the left-hand side of the screen now are just one solid wall. And then here are the elevations. This is the front and you can see that the, uh, I should mention the commission approved the design with a hipped roof. The applicant submitted a revision to the building permit and at the time, uh, staff didn't catch that they had changed the roof from a gap, uh, from a hip to a gable roof. There is a, a condition of approval, a standard condition that allows the director to approve minor modifications to a, a design that's received planning commission approval. However, in this case, it should have been sent to the commission for review. It was just something that staff did not catch before we had approved the revision. And here's the rear of the structure. This is the east elevation where you can see the new dormers. And then finally the west elevation. So in addition to a designer view entitlement, they are increasing the floor area, which means they need a new floor area ratio exception. Uh, the code allows this site the maximum floor area 0.4. The prior approval received a 0.54 floor area. Well, that, that's what it exists as with the ADU now. Uh, and this new request adds 0.02. So they would have a final FAR of 0.56. Uh, and they would be, I believe, the largest home in Heather Gardens. 56 Diane, which the commission heard at the last meeting would, would be larger, but they are not approved. And as designed, the, the project does require setback variances. The required front yard setback is 20 feet and the side yard setback is six feet. The design uses a 15-foot, two-inch front yard setback and a five-foot side setback. Uh, we've received, actually I should say we, we received a text message. That was one public comment that we got in support. There were no other formal letters sent in. But as you'll notice in the packet of materials, the applicant received an extensive list of signatures in, in support from the neighbors. So in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission hold a public hearing, take public comment, discuss and approve the project subject to findings and conditions of approval. I do want to note there is a condition of approval to have the dormers removed. Staff believes it creates the appearance of a three-story residence and it does not fit the character of the Heather Gardens neighborhood. So that is all I have for you. If you have any questions, I am here to answer them and the applicant and owner are here as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alex. Questions?
I have a quick question. I need to recuse myself because I'm within 500 feet and I won't. Do I do it now or?
Yes, yeah. Thank you very much. Uh, do we have any, um? I guess I should clarify, we still do have a quorum even without Commissioner Wagstaff. Yeah. Uh, do we have any questions for staff? Yeah. You want to wait, yeah. So I'd like to welcome the, um, the applicant or their architect to make her presentation. I had a couple of questions that I want the applicant, you're about to get up, so I assume that's you, um, to address. I guess I learned today that the applicant, the owner applicants were in the building business. So if you can, should I write this down? I'm just going to read what I said is if you can, in, in your presentation, have the applicant explain exactly why they built the house to these plans and not to the plans that were originally approved by staff, the commission and any approvals that came from the planning department? That was my first question. And then my second question that I would love for you to address is hypothetically, if we were able to approve this project, how do we stop other homeowners who come in and get permits from staff? Then, then building something that doesn't comply with what the permit says? And I think that's going to be the challenge that the commission has been presented with tonight. Not necessarily the design or anything, but just that's the situation that we have. So I would love to kind of get your thoughts on that. Okay.
Is this, huh? Okay. I'll just address the first question.
Would you mind introducing yourself?
Oh, sorry, my name's Nora Fry, Fry Design, I'm the architect. About your first question, the homeowner, the homeowner is actually a sewer contractor. So they do trenchless sewer work. And a friend of theirs is doing the contracting and he is typically doing work in Sonoma. He wasn't aware that this was a design review project. What happened here was I wasn't really involved because they didn't call me with any other changes. They started building the ADU first and they made changes to the ADU. And Ed was there every step of the way. And I have, um, later on I'll go through and show you the, well, actually right here I have a printout of all of the ADU approvals. I mean inspections and then.
Sorry, who was Ed?
What? Ed Campbell's a building inspector?
Okay, thank you.
Because it makes reference in the staff report that all this work was done without getting an inspection. So let me just say that, that's not true. Everything in ADU was inspected, there was probably eight different inspections. And at, for the ADU. And at the end, he, um, said, he told the contractor, I need, um, your architect to submit the plans the way they were built. And so I, that's when I knew that there was changes made. So I submitted those plans. The homeowner and I, we filled out the application for revision to the plans. And then, um, I submitted the revised plans and that was the end of that. And then they started building the house. And I think some of the confusion was because they knew that they could build an 800 square foot ADU and they, the, the ADU they built, I think was 593 or 600 or something. So in the back of their mind, they thought maybe, you know, they had some extra, they started making some, some changes. Again, they didn't call me about this, but Ed was there and Ed was fine. He had two, um, foundation inspections and they also had scheduled some PG&E inspections. So he was there. They overbuilt the house, every single wall is two by six. The framing is really oversized, everything is super strong and Ed thought it was great. He measured things, he measured the height, he said the height's two feet under. There was never any word from the building inspector that anything was going wrong. And again, nobody sought to call me about this. And so I didn't know until I got an email from Ali saying a picture of the dormers. So that's what happened with that. Now I'm going to talk about a few things that were in the staff report because I think there, I just wanted to make some clarifications. One, and Alex, did you get my, um, uh, photos? Okay.
Before you do that, you should mention that, did, did you design the dormers as the architect?
No.
So who did, just on the spot? They just built the dormers, just built them?
My understanding is the builder did, um, the owners were out of town at the time. And I think the impetus was that, um, it looked, you know, it just was a little boring with just having a roof plane there. And that if they added three dormers, it would help the, this is, there's no attic space, that's another thing I wanted to clarify. Um, when the inspector came out or when Bill called and asked me to draw two sections, I did, I measured it. I remeasured the whole plans, I drew all the new set of plans, the way they're built. It's five foot four under the ridge beam and then it goes down to nothing. So Larkspur's code states that attic space is anything over seven feet. So there's no attic space in this house. There's not even any floor, there's a little bit of floor and I'll show you in another, um, slide that it's only over the front two bedrooms. It's for the, for the furnace and the air conditioning units and all the ducting, that's what it's for. The middle dormer is open, there's no floor under that, it lets light into the stairway. The other dormer above the back bedroom is just there to sort of balance it out. So it doesn't look funny with one little dormer in it. So that's sort of what the, what.
Is the ceiling of the bedroom going to be open so the dormer provides light? Is that the idea?
Yes.
So not a floor?
There's no floor.
Okay.
It's only a floor in the front bedroom and part of the second front bedroom. And that's for the ducting in along the hall, so the ducts can, can get to the back bedroom. So that's what that's about. And I can show you some pictures about that, but let me just go through a few things. One thing I wanted to talk about was this, um, I feel like it's a little misleading to say that this is, you know, 56% because the house, um, the state mandated, as you know, that the ADUs are exempt from floor area. Otherwise, nobody will build them. And I think they weren't exempt 10 years ago and they never got built. So every year, it seemed to me that the state was kind of changing the, the codes and, and it was exempt. So, um, I think it's, it's, it's a little misleading to, to count this ADU in the floor area. And it's also hard to compare what's really happening in the neighborhood because in Alex's report of all these, um, the list of all the neighborhood houses, there's only four ADUs. So you really can't get a sense of what's happening in this neighborhood. So I did a FAR analysis that's, um, in my, Alex, could you show number one? That's, it's also in the set I gave you, that all the dark numbers, those are from 47 to 58%. So if we compare this house of 2994 square feet, the garage of 241, we get a total of 3235 and that's 47%. That is well within what's going on in this neighborhood. In fact, 23 of the houses are between 47 and 58%. And 11 of those are between 50 and 58. So you can see the site is right there. And the two next on their immediate neighbors are also at 47%. So I don't see that this is overbuilt by any stretch. It's very compatible what's happening in the neighborhood. And I just think it's fair to compare apples to apples. If you want to add the ADU into the allowable, into the FAR, then you should say that the allowable is 52%. And if you would have an 800 square foot ADU for Seven Heather, which is next door, 40, uh, 450 William, which is the backdoor neighbor, and 11 Heather, which is two down, you would get, um, an FAR between 60 and 62%. So that's a true fair comparison. That's all I have to say right now about the ADU. The other thing I want to talk about is all those, Alex, if you can show two, three and four, this is about having work without inspections. So slide two shows the inspections for, um, the house, that there was four of those.
Oh, I'm sharing just the window here, one second.
So you can see the top two are foundation, but the bottom two are for sheathing. And again, it was a little hard for the builder to know that there was anything wrong when Ed was out measuring and, and saying, boy, it looks great. And then if you can show number three and four, those are the ADU, um, submittals for revision and the revised plans. So none of that work was done without inspections or without the city knowing. That's, those are the revised plans and then the other one is the form that we filled out to the city. Then I want to just mention about the, um.
I'm, I'm having a little technical difficulty with the third one, I can come back to that.
If you look at five, six and seven, those are the, um, where we're talking about, um, the design being flat. I think he, I think it was only that east elevation that didn't have articulation and setbacks because the front and the west elevation, they're all setbacks, they're all stepped back. Like here's the front, it's stepped back and it's indented. And the, um, the backside is, the upper floor is stepped back, there's a deck. And on the west side, again, the upper floor is stepped back and there is articulation where the wall, the lower floors stepped back. So the only elevation that's flat is the east side and it's blocked by the trees. And again, that's why I think the builder said, I think that we, the only place they're going to see articulation is at the roof line. And that's was the impetus for the dormers. So the, I don't know if you can get any of these. Here's the sections and these are showing that it's only five foot four at the, at the top. And nobody is ever going to be living there. This is on the right side, it's showing, okay, there. So, and then here's the upper bedroom that's completely vaulted. That's open in the middle to let light in the stair. And then you've got an attic space above those front bedrooms. And if you can show the next one, that shows a floor, um, plan where, um, it shows how much of the, um, floor is, is flat. It also states it on the, um, floor plan. But here you can see the articulation on the sides. There's no flat part of the west elevation at all. And the, and if you've been out there, um, you can, you can see that the, really the roof is the only visible part. You can't really see anything on that east side. So just kind of wanted to sit, be really clear that there's no attic space in this house. That's really going to be used. And if you look at the, I don't know if you can get the east elevation up, those dormers are really small, they're five or six feet. So you can't even use that space. Just wanted to, I, okay, yeah, so it's, it's clear that those windows are in there. So even if there, there was a floor, you couldn't even stand up in those, only right under those dormers. And they're dropped below the ridge height. So I, I really don't think it makes, it creates any more mass. I think it helps reduce the mass. So I think that this project should be approved the way it's built. It's been stopped over three months. No one tried to do anything illegal. And to answer your question about how as a planning commission, do we prevent this from happening? You just make them go through what we're doing. We're, we have to stop the project. You just make them go through what we're doing. We're, we have to stop the project. There was a ton of rain and storms and everything. We're lucky that there wasn't massive damage to the house. And now three months, over three months later, we're here, do, I had to do a whole new set of drawings. We're here. We talked to all the neighbors. We've got thirty-seven neighbors supporting this project. And we're going through design review again. Who wants to do that? I mean, it's a nightmare. So I, I think that's enough of a deterrent. I, I certainly wouldn't recommend it to another architect or a homeowner to be stopped in the middle of the rainy season. You know, and oh, by the way, there's fines. So there's a third deterrent. So I think that's enough to stop this. I think that it has been, you know, it was very thoughtfully and carefully designed. It really considered the neighbors. It, it stepped back. It has big, big setbacks. Seventy-three percent of the addition is located in the rear of the house. Fifty-eight percent of the addition is on the lower floor. The smaller second floor addition is stepped back from the first floor on two sides. The lower roof is articulated with gable ends in the front and the rear. There's a recessed entry porch, roof dormers visible above the trees, a roof deck with decorative railing to help reduce the mass. Numerous architectural features such as stone veneer below a water table, articulated posts and bases, trellises, window boxes, decorative shingles, everything to provide visual interest and reduce the perceived mass and bulk. The design is sensitive to the neighbors. That's maybe why thirty-seven percent want it built. And the large distances between the homes help preserve light and maintain privacy between residences. It's a corner lot. There's only two adjacent neighbors. The adjacent neighbor in the back has a big garage. There's seventy feet between his house and this house. There's seventy-five feet approximately between the house to the north and the house to the east. There's mature, mature trees that aren't moving. And like I said about the FAR, twenty-three homes have an FAR of forty-seven percent or higher. And of those, eleven have an FAR between fifty and fifty-eight percent. So I think it's well within the norm of this neighborhood. And the style and the details and all the features are very similar and compatible with the neighborhood. So I would like to see it proved as submitted and built. And I'll be, do you want, do you guys want to talk?
Wait. We might have questions for the architect. So do we have any questions for the architect before she sits down? And otherwise we can just listen to the rest of the applicants and then ask our questions. Okay, great. All right, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Jerry Hardyman, one of the owners. I'm not going to say too much, but just a bit of history on this. This is like our third time trying to get planning approval for this house. We've lived there for about, you know, almost forty years. The first time we tried, we had six kids in a seventeen hundred square foot house. And we were refused that time because it was the biggest house in the neighborhood, we were told. Which, you know, there wasn't much sympathy for our common sense, I thought at the time, you know, for what we were trying to do. We weren't trying to build a house and flip it or anything. So it's been a long haul. This is, you know, two thousand twenty-five now. And, you know, we finally got to build it. So you know, as far as I can see, I know we, you know, the dormers are a question mark, but you know, as regards the rest of the neighborhood, you know, you can't have every house the same. I mean, you'd have all bungalows in the neighborhood if you stuck to that theory, you know, over the last forty years. When we moved there, there was probably only a handful of two-story houses even. They were all, you know, bungalows. But you know, it, it adds a bit of variety as far as I'm concerned. We talked to every one of our neighbors pretty much about the dormers especially because we knew it was an issue. And everybody, I mean, liked them. No, but not even one neighbor said anything derogatory about it. So you know, we think they look good. I know we should have probably been a bit more careful about, you know, getting permission or whatever. I mean, we, like I said, we were out of town. Not blaming Dennis fully, but we kind of are in a way. But I was to blame as well per se for not, you know, being a bit more diligent about saying shit, you know, we should, we should look into this a bit more before we do it. But it didn't seem like at the time that big of a deal, you know? So anyway, that's my five cents.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hardman. Do we have anyone else? Neighbor? Okay.
So at this time, have any neighbors complained about this at all? Is there zero complaints? Do we know? Has anybody complained about their dormers? Just question.
The work was brought to the city's attention by someone in the neighborhood.
So somebody anywhere in the neighborhood had a complaint?
It wasn't a complaint. It was just that the house didn't look like what was approved.
Oh. Okay. Well, I live across the street and I think it's fine. I've driven around. I've seen houses with dormers. There's one on Montavista that has three dormers exactly like that.
Sorry, could you introduce yourself?
I'm Nick Knowles.
Okay.
Yeah. You've seen me before. Yeah.
Just for the record.
And I live twenty-two Diane Lane in the middle of mass construction everywhere because you guys have approved about a hundred jobs in my neighborhood. But I would like to see the Hardymans finish this job. I think holding them up is a, just a crime. They've done really nothing wrong if it's not exactly to the plans. It's close enough, I say. I don't know. They're really good folks. And I don't know. I don't think this will be the biggest house in Heather Gardens, the way we're going. I've seen one down the street that looks a lot bigger. And at the end of the day, I'll be the little mouse house at eight hundred square feet. And it doesn't seem that there's much I can do about it anyway, as I tried before. And I paid money to, to do that, but no one's doing that here. So what's the problem? I'm just saying. Probably have a lot more to say, but probably shouldn't say it. All right.
That's it.
Thank you very much for your comment. Do we have anyone else who'd like to make a comment? So we have a whole family here, right? Okay. Is anyone on Zoom that would like to speak? Oh, yeah.
I'm Melissa Hardyman. I am, I'm one of the owners of Three Heather Way. And I just feel obligated to say that we the dormers, when the dormers were a thought, when they were in, when, when our contractor said, you know, I think dormers would look really pretty up there. It would let in a lot of light and it would do this and it would do that. I mean, I was like on the phone saying, yeah, that sounds fabulous. Yeah, why not? I love light. I love sun. I love, I love, you know, the bright. I thought it sounded fabulous. And I, I encouraged and I'm not going to lie. I was excited about it. I never thought for one minute that I needed to call Nora. I just thought it was a, a great thing. I don't know why. I mean, I, yes, we are contractors, but we, and we install sewers. We don't build homes per se. I mean, yes. We, we have and we, you know, we can, I guess. I, I've never built a house. This is our first. And again, we have, you know, we, we, we've tried and now we can and we are able and we have six beautiful children. And they're, they're not getting any smaller and they're, they're getting, you know, wives and husbands and all the wonderful things that happens as they grow and we're getting grandchildren. And this house is a dream. It's a dream come true. We can all fit in there. And as the kids stay now, they're like, Mom, why are you waiting? You know, why did you wait till now to do it? Well, when we were raising six kids, we didn't have money to do it. But now we do and we're happy and delighted and thankful and grateful. And we hope that the dormers can stay. I pray for that, but whatever happens will happen. And we're really happy and thankful for the opportunity to be here. Thanks.
Thank you very much. I think we, we will, but let's see what other comments we have. But thank you very much for your comment.
Bill Hansel, our building officials in the audience, and he has a hand raised. He wanted to make comments about working without permits. And then there's also one other caller that we believe is probably James Holmes.
Okay, let's, let's hear from them. It doesn't matter. But we can remind them to keep their comments to three minutes.
Sure. Yes. The number ending in one, four, zero, two, you are able to speak now?
James Holmes, there, there, I, the, the chair's concern is, is reasonable because it's worth noting, there is a significant difference between approving unpermitted work done by prior owners, especially prior owners years back, and approving unpermitted work done by current owners. My, my impression is that various council members at times have, have articulated the idea that there is a, a public policy that is furthered by being hesitant to encourage any idea that it's easy, that it's easier to ask forgiveness than to ask permission. So it's a legitimate consideration. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Holmes.
Bill, you should be able to speak now.
Hi, thank you. This is Bill Hansel, City Building, Chief Building Official. I wanted to speak. I, I don't have, I don't want to comment at all on the, you know, aesthetic or the decisions of the design or anything like that, that's in the planning purview. But I thought it would be helpful for the commission to just understand the building departments, you know, what our job is. We spend all of our days doing building compliance and safety and following the structured path of getting permits for projects and then enforcing them. We have myself, code enforcement officer, the, the, the building inspector, permit tech, plan checkers, all of the machinations that go into making sure that ultimately plans are approved and buildings are built according to those plans. So I want to speak to just a couple of things immediately that were mentioned by the architect. The building inspector and for, you know, your general information, when the building inspector goes out to a building site, he's called for, he or she is called for a specific purpose to look at, you know, a, a portion of the job that has progressed that far. And generally, they are, they are looking at building safety issues, construction compliance. They are not planners. And so they, it was, it would not be surprising that they wouldn't be looking at the entire structure the whole time because they are focused on the inspection that they are going to do. And then they move on to the next one. Our building inspector is handling all the projects that, that come through our offices. So I don't think it's true that because somehow the building inspector made some positive comments, that, that really has anything to do with non-compliance with the plans that were approved. In terms of contractors, you know, being from out of town, there is no jurisdiction anywhere that in California, at least following the California Building Code, that allows for changes without revisions to be submitted and approved. Has nothing to do with planning, you know, design approvals or anything. It's that literally that document, those documents have, you know, have been plan checked for safety. In this particular instance, it was not a matter of, oh, there were just, you know, this, this corner was bumped out or these dormers were added. The entire design of the interior was completely changed from the approved plans, which means that all of the structural drawings were obsolete. And yet the building was being built according to that. And so e- even if it were in on a small aspect, we would certainly help to facilitate revisions. And we have a process for that. And we try to make sure that the building process, you know, is not restricted by slowdown in those revisions, even though they're coming from, you know, changes in the applicants. But in this case, none of that was followed. I do want to say that, you know, in general, for those of us who are trying to do our jobs, making sure that buildings are safe, making sure that, you know, that plans are approved and checked. And it is really, it really undermines all of our work. And in fact, all of the other projects that we are constantly chasing down on a much smaller scale where something is done without a permit. And we are trying to make sure that that is retroactively approved and, you know, in some manner, or that it's fixed to the level that it was supposed to be. So although I, I think the Hardymans seem to be lovely people and I have no opinion on, you know, the aesthetics of the house or anything like that. I can say that it does make it difficult if there is an impression somehow that all the machinations of our building department don't really matter because, you know, you just build what you want. And the drawings that were approved and were plan checked and the cost for that and everything else, let alone the trouble of making sure that it's being enforced, isn't really that important. So I would, I would say that, you know, just in wrapping up that you know, these, the, the, the construction code and the building codes, they are a civil code. And it is actually breaking the law to be, to be building not according to permitted plans. So I'm sure there's some type of a resolution here. And again, I don't speak personally on, you know, on the project, but I do want to say, I do want you to understand the context of what we are trying to do in the building department to make sure that, you know, Larkspur remains, you know, a, a safe environment with its structures and that's compliant with the California Building Code series. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. That was actually really helpful to hear. So thank you. I actually want to add to that as well because one thing I need to share with the commission is I did go down to the property this afternoon. And I met Mrs. Hardeman. She, she was on site with some of her children, I now know. And they did take me inside the property and I did get a chance to look around. And I, I can, I do sort of agree with what they're saying in terms of, I don't think that they're intending to use the upper area as a third floor. From the way it was described to me and what I could see, and I did actually take a picture that I'm happy to share. The, I guess what was presented by Nora Frey was, was, was accurate in terms of of the three dormers, one was in the stairwell, one I was, it was described to me as being an HVAC area. And then the other one almost seemed to be like a higher ceiling. So from my perspective, I, I don't think the dormers are that unattractive. And I, I unfortunately do think they're unpermitted and that wasn't part of the, the design, but they they're not an, a bad, from my opinion, it's not a bad addition. But here, you can see this is on the inside. So right now, I guess I'm more focused on the fact, it's really more the process here, more than maybe what just what we, clearly the commission, which I volunteer on and I volunteered on for many years. You know, and I spend time coming here and, you know, I could be at home with my children, but I'm not. I'm here and I'm trying to spend time doing the right thing for the city. So we look at all these plans and then we try and give a fair and reasonable opinion and approval or no approval. And what I'm seeing is that it sort of didn't matter then, something else then got built because I'm comparing what I see and what was approved by the commission a few years ago to what was actually built. And again, it's not an unattractive design. It's just, it doesn't follow the rules. And that I think is the issue that we're, what I personally am trying to gra, I'm grappling with right now is what can we do to make it fair for everybody else who spends the time and comes through planning and spends the money and does everything the, by the way it's supposed to be done. So that's what we're trying to solve for right now. Anyway, I wanted to share that piece before as well. Okay. Do we have anyone else in the public that wants to comment? No. Okay. All right. Well, we'll bring it back now and we can discuss. Ask for volunteers to go first. Would anyone like to go first? Okay, Commissioner Hall.
Sure, I'll take a stab at it. You know, I wasn't on the commission when you guys approved the previous plans. You know, I wasn't on the commission when you guys approved the previous plans. I do struggle with, you know, all of the changes to what was approved. I think that's, you know, my, my biggest issue. I agree, it's, it's not a bad looking design, you know, from what I saw, I didn't go inside. But looking at it from, you know, the two streets, I, I was curious about, I guess the west side and next to the garage, there's the gate and then there's something being built over the pathway that I wasn't sure if that was temporary or not. That was a question I had. There's these, these posts that are up and over. All, but it looks like they're going all the way down. Okay, it looked like there was more than just the one. On Heather.
If you want to make formal questions, should we have them come up and answer questions?
Okay. That's what I was wondering, if it was temporary or long-term, because I was like, okay, that looks like you're building something out all the way out to the fence. Okay. So they're saying no, that it's temporary.
Oh, you mean the scaffolding, this is what you're talking about?
No, not that. It was on the, it's on the side, like if you're looking at the garage from Heather, on the right, the gate, and then there's a pathway there and then there is these. Yeah. Is that Diane?
Use the microphone.
Yeah.
Otherwise it won't be recorded.
Should we open? If you're looking at the house from the street to the right, it's just the, 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 the path down to the backyard, you know, it's the, you know, it's the, the, it's just the side and that's just scaffolding there. There's nothing being built there. There are, there is, there's, I was, what I thought you were talking about was that there's a a shed in the backyard that will, is going to be demolished as soon as we get done. But that, that's, the garage has always been in the back. Because we have a detached two-car garage.
Do you want to stay put for a minute? I think, do we have actually further questions for the applicant while she's up?
Probably.
So do you mind holding on for a bit and maybe we can ask you some questions?
I actually wanted to make, just to make a comment, was that I understand, and again, please forgive me for, for my ignorance, but I understood that if we made changes to like interior walls, that it wasn't something that, that needed to be brought to the attention of, of the planning department immediately, that it was like an as-built? I understand. I don't know exactly what that meant, but, but that's, that's what I was under the impression of. And so in regard to Mr. Hansel's comments, I, there was never any, I did not mean to undermine or to insult or to, to make anybody feel that it, we weren't, you know, trying, we, we just weren't trying to do the right thing. I, just as we were building, I realized that, that like having a door here looked really awful. And having the door over here looked so much better, having this wall kind of, you know, go back five feet was much better because it gave us room from here to here to have a piece of furniture. And so there was nothing bad-minded. I, again, I just, it was, I was told, and again, please forgive my ignorance, that that interior was interior and that it wasn't as something that needed to be addressed immediately, that it could be an as-built. And I understand an as-built is a plan that I would have told Nora about and said, Nora, you know, you got to come into the house now and see what, what's going on.
Thank you. We, we understand that. It sounds like you didn't know what the process was from. I mean, but it's not just the interior. I mean, the exterior has also been, when, because I'm, when I'm comparing what was approved to the west side and the east side, they look different to me. So.
Didn't that, we got that approved. I, we, I thought we, and did we not submit a plan and get that approved for that?
Can you confirm that?
No, like every, every elevation of the exterior was changed from the plan that was approved by the building department. The walls were pushed out, the door, there were, used to be bump outs on the planning set that was on the approved building set. Those were filled in. The roof line was changed with approval, but then it was changed on site to be steeper, pitch and taller. Like everything on the house, the entire interior resembles the plan that was approved, but there's a lot of changes. But you're correct that we wouldn't, we, the building department could have approved interior changes. They wouldn't have to go to the planning commission, but the exterior was changed too.
And I think that's where we, where we had the more of an issue.
So I guess you wouldn't have had to return if you only changed the interior.
So I guess one question I had for you and the architect was if we wanted to reintroduce some of the more, some of the articulation that was in the original design, because that's what was approved, like how difficult, maybe this is an architect, architect's question. It's like, what are we talking about here? Is that, is that feasible? Is that, is this, I mean, I haven't, again, I can't see how, how easy or difficult that would be.
I think you're only talking about the east because the, the west and the north and the south are pretty well articulated. Is that not your understanding? That's my understanding.
Well, I guess there was, there was.
I mean, I know it's different, but it's not.
And, and please excuse my language, I'm not an architect and I don't have the right language here. I mean, I guess the, the east side does look a lot prettier on the original plan on the outside and then the west side. I mean, you're right. I mean, I guess it's mostly the east side.
Well, the issue with the east side is that there are all those trees, so it's not really visible. I mean, that, and there, there's still trellises and there's a railing and the top floor setback. But the reality, when you go to the job site, especially in the summer, but also the fall and spring is it's those first two floors of the east side are not visible. So if you really want articulation and breaking up of the mass and that's, I think it was a good idea to put the dormers on. I mean, I understand where you're coming from and saying like, obviously we should have come back. I would have come back if I was called up about this because I've been doing this for 25 years and I've never, ever had to be in this position to have a hearing now. I haven't had a project that went like this, so would have done it, but we're also here, the frustrating thing is I think this is well within an approvable project if this was submitted at first. That's why it's hard because I don't think we're asking for anything that, that nobody else in the neighborhood has. You know, it's just the, the way it came about was wrong. But I feel like it's, they're being penalized two or three different or four different ways. And I don't think any other project would want to have to go through this. So, but I, I, as far as adding articulation or adding bays to that east side, it's going to go further into the setback make, it won't be counted as floor area because they're off the, the, off the floor. I mean, we could add bays under there if you want. I just think it's not going to solve the real problem if you're talking about articulation.
I, I'm also trying to solve for how not to set a precedent here. I want to give you, I want to give the applicants a house that they're looking for. They clearly want to build a house that they can accommodate their entire family, that they're happy living in. They've lived here a long time. We need members of the community. But, so we, we want to allow them to build what they want to build, but at the same time, not set a precedent that it's okay to build and then come in and ask for forgiveness afterwards. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to come up with different solutions as, and one of the thoughts was, well, if we went back to somewhat the original design in some way, would that be, and I don't know what my fellow commissioners are going to say. So I'm just asking this as a question is.
It is possible to go back to the original design. It just involves demolishing some of the walls that were built, some of the wall areas, because obviously they filled it in, made it a flat plane. The roof now is coming out at a different angle and comes down further. So that could either be cut back or would be just over, going over the parts where the, the recessed areas are. The, and then there was a lower level, there was a little roof on the lower level. I mean, it was, it's a different design, but it could, it could look similar to what was approved. It'll just be wider because the floor area was also expanded, but that elevation could be restored. They would just have to demolish some of the work that was done.
Okay. What I'm trying to avoid is them having to demolish the house. I don't want, I don't want to have them redo the project.
They shouldn't have to demolish the house to go back to that elevation, but they're demolishing parts of it to go back to that elevation.
Okay. So that's something to consider, I guess. That was one thought. And I think I've already expressed my thoughts about the dorm, the dormer windows. Do we have any more questions for the architect or the applicant while they're up?
Just curious about the skylights on the other side of the, of the roof. Those skylights are to illuminate the attic or the interior space below that's going to open up into, because I, I noticed that there was five or six skylights on that.
So the two skylights closest to the ridge are to illuminate the stairwell. That's where the stairwell is. And then there's two other ones. Those are in the bathrooms. Because we can't.
The ceiling is pretty high in those bathrooms.
Yeah, those are vaulted. I don't know, Alex, if you could ever.
I, I get it. I get it. Yeah.
The original plan had bigger windows and there was a fourth bedroom back there. And so they changed it and there are higher windows and there are sandblasted windows. So there's not getting a lot of light in those and they wanted to make sure the neighbor didn't have any issues. And so because they're losing light on the exterior windows, thought it made sense to get light from it.
Yeah. I mean, the reason I ask is because reading the staff report, I, clearly there was concern that that was going to be a third floor.
It's clearly not.
Clearly is not.
Right.
And so that, that actually helps.
That whole side is basically vaulted.
Yeah, yeah.
And there's a few skylights in, on the lower part over the kitchen, but in my experience, adding a skylight is kind of like, it's usually a, a small add. It's not.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's a way of making your roof leak more is what it usually is.
Right. Well, hopefully not.
Yeah.
Do we want any more clarification questions? Any questions on staff based on what we heard?
Well, I guess I just had a, I had a couple of clarifications for Nora. So first of all, I guess I, I can, I'm sympathetic to your, to your situation. It's, I'm sure an uncomfortable situation to be in. I'm curious if you could get some of the, the lighting effects of those dormers with a skylight, would that be an alternative to achieve some of the light effects that, that you're after?
Um, yeah, you mean, we could put, yeah, we could put skylights on the other side.
Okay.
If we were to take the dormers off or something.
And then I had a question for staff. I guess it's sort of more of a like clerical question. The, the front yard variances were previously approved by, in 2020.
For the, for the areas of structure that were in the setbacks then.
Previously in the.
And then there's, now there's new areas in the setback and the roof is taller in the setback. And because most of the house has been essentially reconstructed now, they need to bring the whole house into compliance with current codes. So the variances that are being considered tonight would allow them to keep the house where it's been built.
Okay.
But isn't most of the neighborhood in that 15-foot setback, it's very common?
And that's correct. The original homes were built to the 15-foot setback. A setback variance was denied on the site in the past for, by prayer planning commission. But most, there's setback varies are not uncommon in the, because most of the homes are built to the 15-foot setback.
Yeah. I mean, personally, I'm not, the setback variance isn't what, what bothers me. I think it's more of sort of echoing the, my other commissioners. It's the, it's the precedent of, you know, not going through the process that we've devoted a lot of time to, all of us up here. And not to say that it's, it's, you know, a personal issue. I think it's more of a, for me, it's more of a, a process issue. You know, I, the, sit, like, I'm not sure how to say it. The, the, you know, the first indication that, that something's going on at the site is when there's not an approved set of plans onsite, you know, I, in my professional capacity, do inspections. And that's sort of the first thing that we look for is a stamped approved set of plans stamped by the city or the county or the governing jurisdiction. So the fact that there isn't one of those should be sort of a, seems like a red flag to the building inspector, but also ultimately to the, the contractor. Because, you know, the building inspector, you know, maybe they should have said something. It's, you know, they're out there to, to see something specific. Maybe they should have noticed more. But it's the contractor's responsibility to build what's on the plans, it seems like. That's, that's sort of my take. I also, I mean, I, I understand that mistakes happen and I, I am certainly not in favor of, you know, taking the whole thing down and starting over. But I guess I do struggle a little bit with, you know, we have a precedent of, or we, we have a decision that was made in the past that we're sort of obligated to follow, right? That was these previously approved, this previously approved set of plans. And we have something now that's, seems like fairly substantially different. And so, you know, reconciling that, I guess, not to repeat what you guys have said, but that's the hard part. Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that's probably one of the reasons why I opened with, what do you suggest? I mean, you're coming in here. You, you can see the, the dilemma that we have up here. And I was hoping you would maybe come in with a suggestion other than, hey, just give us what we want. Because we need to solve for that too. And that's a very difficult situation that we're in right now.
Well, I guess I, first of all, I just want to state for the record, we're not, I'm not trying to blame the building inspector or something. I mean, I, I was just trying to tell you honestly what happened and nobody was trying to do anything illegal. And I guess as far as, we are going through the process again, right? Because we're here, we had to do all the drawings, we had to do all that stuff. I get that it's not the right timing. I understand that. But we're going through design review a second time. And all the time and the effort and the energy and that entails, we're here, we've done it, we're doing it. We're, we're, there's fines being levied. There's, you know, luckily I hope that, that the house hasn't been ruined already by being through all these storms and being stopped. You know, that, that's a risk, but I guess the reason I'm saying I think it should be approved as, as it's built is because to me, if, if you want to penalize, if you want to say what penalty should you, if that's what your question is, but if it's, I'm, I'm just saying that it, it, it conforms to all the things, you know? It's not, it is consistent with all of the design parameters. And I think if it was brought up, brought to you this way before, it would have been approved. So, I mean, if you want to ask me, what's the best way to penalize this project? Is that what your question is? I mean, I, I don't know. I mean, I think.
I think, I, I think, I think the question is, I mean, it just reminds me of Ulysses S. Grant in 1876 said, mistakes were made as all can see and I admit it. And, you know, that was to, as a result of all the scandal that surrounded his administration then. And then the question was, well, what do you do about it? Right?
Right, right.
And so, you know, as to Nick's point, you know, has anybody complained about it in the neighborhood? Well, you have 37 people and the neighbors and, and I've known the Hardymans and my Dana, my wife and I have known this family for years and think they're among the most wonderful people in Larkspur, as are all the neighbors. So there's no bad guys here. That's, that's not the issue. The issue is how do we get? Because people have, Nick, just to answer your question, people have actually called me as a planning commissioner and said, what are you going to do about this? Because if you guys, you know, let this go as it is, then I'm putting dormers on my roof. I mean, literally quote unquote. That's the kind of stuff that I hear. And I'm like, whoa, I don't know what to, to do about that, right? You know? And I mean, I, maybe I'd like to stick some dormers on my roof too. Yeah, of course, you know, so, so, of course, and it will happen again. So the, the question though is, is, as everybody says, aesthetically, it looks great. I mean, I think it looks fine. It, it, it's, it's a nice design. I like the dormers. They, they look good. And I would hate to tell people, okay, you know what? Go rip out your whole house. Because that's difficult and that's really expensive and that's punitive. And I, and I would not personally, as a commissioner, favor that. But I do want to make a, like a, I would like to, what's the word I'm looking for? I'd like to send a message out to the community that you have to go through process or else there will be consequences if you don't. And those consequences could be what you said, they could be, nothing is not solved with, with, with money, money can solve things. So fines or whatever, resubmitting the, the, the plans with the changes and having them approved as they are now is essentially the process we're going through right now, is it not? So, I mean, that's how I would look at it. Let's look, you know? And, and I would say probably some part of the solution would be to reimburse the city for the extra time administratively they've had to do with this and a building inspector and the building people, et cetera, et cetera. To do with this and a building inspector and the building people, et cetera, et cetera. So that's how I I'd be looking at it. I I don't want to tear down what you've done because it looks nice.
Well, yeah, I I agree, and I don't think. Um, going, trying to go back to the other design, is that practical and that easy to do?
Yeah. To me, this float this flowed from the fact that we also missed as a city, we missed the change from the gabled, the hip roof to to the to the the gabled roof. That allowed you to build the dormers because if you had, you know, hips, then you wouldn't have even thought about doing that, right? So in some way, this is kind of on us too. I mean, on us as a city of Larkspur. So I kind of see that side of the situation as well. Uh, having put the gables in now, it allowed for you to go, aha, dormers would look nice. For us, that never would have happened if you had the, well, you could put it on. It would that would look kind of nutty.
Right.
But.
You can see we were, when I knew about making the change, I was there and we.
Yeah, 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 I get it. I get it.
When I was involved, we weren't trying to just do stuff, so.
Right, right. So I think that that is, you know, as there's the rub is like, so what do we do now to make sure that? On a go forward basis that we are sticking to rules.
Yeah. Right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other comments? Otherwise, we really will bring it back to the commission now.
I think that's what we've been doing.
Well, oh, one more coming.
Brock Wagstaff sixty six Diane Lane. And it has been, it's sort of interesting sitting on this side, looking that way. Um, and I very much appreciate. My colleagues and and how they're discussing this because it's a it's a hard issue. My initial reaction was, and and this was from, I'm the only. Uh, remaining member of the commission that approved the other one, although I had to. Um, recuse myself then, but I was there and sort of involved. And the hip roof was basically to mitigate the feeling of height of that building. Um, once it became a gable roof, um, sort of all bets are off in a way. And that, uh, you know. That wasn't their fault. Um. So my my thought would be, um, perhaps, you know, I don't know whether there's um. Fines involved or not, but. Uh, I think the dormers actually help the design and. And I'm 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 also quite aware that we don't want to have this happen very often. Uh, where we're having to deal with, you know, they just changed it. So. I'm glad I'm here in the audience. You guys have to decide.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Okay, go ahead.
I thought for myself, what I'm going to do is put a big red stamp on my drawings that say any changes to these plans need to be reviewed by the architect. So I don't have to get in this situation again. And um, I had a project in Mill Valley, I I think. Five years ago, maybe it was where. They, when you start construction, they have a um pre-construction meeting and they make the architect and the contractor. And every single subcontractor, the plumber, the electrician, everybody come to that meeting and they tell you that. It's going to be double, triple or quadruple of fines if you do any changes or anything like that. So that was something that. Got everybody on board and made everybody understand.
Thinking to include the owners in that? Yeah, yes, they did include the. Right. Okay, and let's bring it now to the commission for deliberate discussion. Okay, thank you. Um, Commissioner Hall, do you want to? Start again. I know you started once. Yeah.
Make me the sacrificial one. Um. It's an interesting dilemma. I'm 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 definitely struggling with the. One time exception not setting a precedent. I think that for me is the biggest issue. I think that if the current as-built plans had been presented to us, we probably would have approved them. And then we wouldn't have this issue. So, you know, it's it's hard for me to see, you know, the old plans, how it's been changed. You know, but it looks good. So it's really and and the neighbors all seem to be in support, which I think is a huge, huge thing. It's an awful lot of work you guys did to get that that support. Um, I do think that that weighs on, you know, my thoughts as well. I don't know how we word it so that it is, you know, if we did decide to approve it, that it was a one-time exception. Not to set a precedent, and I that almost seems like a city attorney. Question.
I don't know. Yeah, thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'm I'm of the similar mindset, you know, we we can, there's sort of two extremes and one extreme is. Build it to the plans that it was approved on. And the other extreme is approve it as is. Um, I don't, I don't think it's, I mean, I kind of agree with Commissioner Hall, you know, if if this was submitted today. Um, I suspect that we would have some some changes to the articulation of the eastern wall. Um, we might have some changes to. Uh, parts in the setback. Um, and we may have said that it should be a a hip roof instead of a gable roof. But does that warrant, uh, you know, going back to the to the previous design? That's. That's a good question. Um. You know, I I I don't want to, I don't want to be in the position up here up here of like directing work and telling people you have to tear out what you put in and and all that. And and I think that overall it looks looks okay. But, you know, the I I do think there are changes that I would have wanted to see and it's it's it is a very difficult spot. And it's, you know, I understand you guys are going through design review again. Um, but the difference here is that it's something that's already built and it's a lot harder to recommend. That, you know, well, maybe we should articulate the eastern wall a little bit or. Something like that when it's already built and it's going to be a heck of a lot more work to change what's actually out there than. Um, what's shown on a set of drawings before construction has started. And then the last thing is what we've been saying this whole time is is, you know, we don't, we really don't want to set a precedent because. Um, it's a it's a hard decision and. I don't want to have to do it. Every two weeks here because people decide to do things that are unpermitted and that goes without saying. You know, the building department, your structural engineer, there are, there are a lot of people that are unhappy. With contractors that do work that is not shown on a set of drawings because there's a there's a reason why. We have plans and why people draw plans and um there's calculations that back them up. And when, you know, people are doing stuff that doesn't follow those plans. It's, it can cause big problems. So. I I uh. You know, those are my, those are my thoughts. Uh, it's, I think it's going to be hard for me to come to a decision on this one, frankly. Um, but I'll hear what you guys have to say.
Thank you so much. It is difficult. Commissioner Swisher.
Well, I don't want to be Solomon that cuts the baby in half. I mean, that's silly. Um, I think that it is a nice design and I I can make the findings for it. I think that we may reap the whirlwind for it in the future. Um, I think we're going to have to be very specific about uh projects in the future. Um, and I think that there should be some penalty, which I'm sure the city can figure out, I would say as a stipulation that. Staff time and the reapplication process fees, et cetera, uh, should be made for it. It's going to be a lot less than ripping this thing out and redoing it. And I don't think taking the dormers out is going to be aesthetically pleasing. I think having the gable roof without the dormers is not going to look good. Um, so, um, I guess I can make findings for it as is.
Thank you. Um, I just want to reiterate, this is a difficult one. Um, for all the reasons that were expressed tonight, um. It's not a bad design. It's it's I'm I if it had come in first time, I actually agree with Commissioner Campbell, we may have suggested some changes. I think the the challenge really is 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 setting the precedent and that's the piece we're trying, we I we just have to solve for tonight and. If we approve it as is, as built. Regardless of what wording we put in. I mean, I I don't think the city attorney is going to provide necessarily anything that's that I can't draft, put it that way. I don't think, I think the message is going to be, no one's going to come and read the small print. So the message is going to be then it's okay. And there will be, like you've suggested, some kind of backlash on that. Which is why I keep going back to, I don't want you to rebuild this property. I don't think, and I don't think I agree with. Um, Commissioner Swisher, I don't think you should take the dormers out, having gone inside and seen it. That was very helpful. I don't think. Those should come out at all. However. And and again, I'm not an architect and I don't want to design the home for you, but I wonder if there's something you can do on that eastern side. Because that is the that is the side that's um on Diane, right, is your eastern side. Where there's something can be done. To at least show that, you know what, you you had to make a change. And and I'm not trying to do this just for the sake of doing this. I'm just trying to, because it. It probably would have been something I would have suggested in an in a in a if this was an initial meeting. Where it wouldn't just be, uh. It would have some more articulation and whether there's something you can do there that would. Satisfy the fact that you've had to come in and honor the original plans, but on the other hand. Um, you're not ripping this hole out and having to start again. And this will allow you to at least finish the roof, get the roof on before the another storm comes in. But then you can work on one side of the project now. That that's what I'm wondering. Now, I'm not saying that my commissioners agree with me, but. Whether there's something that can be done here, I don't know. I mean, we can still continue to discuss this. I know we've all given thoughts, but you think that's something that works?
Personally.
You don't, you think that could work?
I don't, I don't have a problem with leaving it as is. As built.
Okay.
I I just think there has to be some administrative justice. I don't think that the justice, though, is.
I don't think tearing it down.
I don't.
Yeah, I agree with that. I don't want them to do that either.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to.
But we have to make a decision.
Yeah. And it's an even even group. So I don't know. I mean, that's why I was wondering if there was something that could be done. Um, where they could continue construction. But.
It'll just. It'll be very difficult for us to issue a permit without an east side elevation. So I mean, it was possible, like there's, they could do everything and just not have that elevation approved, but that's a little strange. Like, it'd be better to get that design approved and then they come in for a permit for the whole project.
So is that going to then force them to come back in?
Or like return in. Two weeks or four weeks. There's the next meetings in two weeks. Um, one other issue I just wanted to bring up is the original approval required the fence and all the landscaping. Over three feet in height within this right-of-way area to be removed, and that wasn't included in this. So I would recommend putting that back in as a approval condition. But because we don't know what's going to be on the street side then, once the fence is gone, and if that means the landscaping is being removed. It might be worthwhile too to request a landscape plan to return here or. Like, even if you're approving the house, maybe that's one punishment is to. Require a landscape plan so you know what's going to replace the fence and the screening.
And and how does that work? It would, they would have to come back in.
We could just approve the house subject to a landscaping plan coming. Yeah.
I'd favor that. I mean, it's a corner lot, so it has to have that three.
And they want the visibility. I think that's the reason why it was included in the first place.
Yeah, all corner lots have to have that lower fence height.
So to avoid them having to come back, is there something we can do where they have to work with staff, even if we had them adjust the the house to? Like, if they could come back with something that would.
Like a landscape plan to.
Landscape plan and the elevation.
I mean, I'm suspecting that it's going to need a fence height exception, but that it's not a big deal. I can't imagine they're going to want to have no fencing on the side of their house.
Well, given that all the neighbors are in approval, the the fence height exception is not going to be an issue, right?
My guess is probably not. They need to propose something, though, because that fence would have to be cut down.
Got it. And but is there something they can do so they don't have to come back?
Yeah, they could.
Two weeks and still adjust.
I mean, I think it's part of the reality is they're going to want to have a fence on the side of their property.
But I'm also talking about like with the eastern elevation, if they wanted to make.
Oh, I mean, they could. Adjust that at staff level. It puts a lot of pressure on us to know if it's good enough.
Sorry, what's the problem with the eastern?
If you just want to go back to what was approved, that's easier because we know what that looks like.
I I I can't tell, not being an architect, I can't tell like how difficult that is to go back to how it is.
Right. I mean, it's going to be work to 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 remove things, to rebuild it the way it was approved.
Anyway. But rather than. It's a lot of stuff. It a lot. I mean, the alternative is just to let to prove it as is.
That's right.
Which is what Commissioner Hall's saying.
I am curious that they've mentioned that there's fines. I didn't see.
There is fines. So the planning application was triple. Double. Double, it might have only been double. I think we do a hundred percent. Same with the building permit fee. Um, we're going to require them to submit for a new permit since the house is different than what was approved. And that building permit too carries a penalty fee.
Something. What about you, Commissioner Campbell?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't. I don't think that, like, you know, we we could require something on the eastern elevation, but. I'm not sure, you know. Like, it's it's pretty good as is, I think. It's it's, you know, it's it's hard, I guess, for me to to say it. You know, in generic terms, this is sort of what we want to see and then. You know.
I don't have any specifics.
I don't think we're here to design.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree with that.
Well, we're not here to design it, um, but. The people who were here to design it did present to the twenty twenty planning commission. And then, you know, we're here to sort of. Deal with with the the consequences of um what happened, so. Yeah.
So we need to make a motion to do something, so. Are you comfortable with? Or you're still in a dilemma?
Um, I'm, I think I'm still on the dilemma. I don't, but I don't think I'm gonna, um. You know, I I think that this case, this case does have sort of a special circumstance in that the this. They had some stuff that slipped by the city, um, some changes that should have been caught and brought back here that that weren't. And so I think to me that, you know, I agree that the next, you know, two doors down, somebody's going to put on dormers and come into us and. We're going to have to explain that to them.
Well, so. I think.
Okay, well, we need to, we need to make a decision tonight, so we should. Do you want to go ahead?
Yep, I'll make a motion that we approve the um. Three Heather Way APN oh two one two one two dash one three Nora Frye applicant, Melissa and Tom Hardiman property owners. Um, uh, we approve the um plans a- as they are with the exception that they have to be resubmitted. And are subject to all fines and costs as outlined by the staff. Uh, in addition to a submission of a landscaping plan, including a fence design for the property as originally outlined in the twenty twenty. Application. Am I missing anything?
Public Works hadn't provided comments, but they can, they they can add, if they have any concerns with anything else, they could add them during the building permits.
Subject to any additional conditions.
Yeah, subject to any findings, uh, uh, changes for Public Works.
Can we have a second?
I'll I'll second. Can we add that it's it's a one-time exception?
No, yeah, I don't think so.
I don't, I mean, does that?
I have the cans open. I mean. I don't think.
I mean, what we, what we, I think what you can't, I mean, what I'm debating to doing is just abstaining then. Right? I can do that and I said then, but that would that would still allow it to pass, right? Why not?
Okay. Right, the motion's on the table.
Okay, make a second it, a second it. Okay, so let's do the roll call.
Aye.
Commissioner Hall?
Aye.
Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
And then I can.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Then I can abstain from that.
Okay, so the motion passes three. With. Two abstentions, one, one rec, one person recused and one abstention.
Right.
A ten day appeal period. Anyone from the public can appeal by filing an appeal form and an appeal fee with the city clerk.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Please finish the project and come in if you're going to make any changes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
You're welcome.
So I do think that. The architect had an interesting idea about what Mill Valley does. That sounded like a really. But that's not a commission related thing.
This gentleman's still here. All right, moving on to our final public item on the, oh no. This is our third public item. Two oh six William Avenue. Uh, PLN twenty four oh four six. Um, could we please have the staff report?
Yes, uh, good evening again, commissioners. The project in front of you is PLN twenty four zero four six for two oh six William Avenue. Uh, for a bit of context, there's a photo of the street view of the home on the left and then the overhead shot on the right. That's on the north side of William Avenue. Uh, the project seeks to create a new nine hundred and thirty square foot second story on an existing thirteen hundred and ninety five square foot residence. Uh, as designed, the project requires approval of design review, a floor area ratio exception and parking and setback variances. Uh, here's the site plan. The footprint of the structure is not going to change. And then here are the first and second proposed floor plans. I think it's technically, it says four bedrooms, but there's a playroom with the window that I believe meets egress. So it could be considered a five bedroom home. And then here are the elevations which get kind of washed out on the big screen. So this is the front elevation on the left is the original single story residence on the right is how it was designed with the second story added on. Here's the rear elevation, same story, original on the left proposed on the right. There's a very small balcony off of these two rear sliders. And then here are the east elevation. And finally, the west elevation. So it does require a floor area ratio exception. Uh, this one's a bit different than normal, just. As the commission is aware, the base floor area is point four. Uh, the applicant is proposing to convert a rear accessory structure into an ADU. So per the municipal code, that square footage is then added as a bonus onto their base floor area ratio. So they get a floor area maximum, floor area ratio maximum of zero point four four rather than zero point four. Uh, the project is requesting an FAR of zero point five four. Uh, in terms of FAR, they would be the second highest, uh, lot in the surrounding three hundred square, three hundred foot radius, excuse me. Uh, but in terms of overall square footage, it would only be the tenth largest home in the neighborhood. Uh, so as designed, the project does require a variance, two variances. Uh, the project proposes one uncovered space where one covered, one uncovered and two guest spaces are required. Similar to the Hazel Avenue project, there is a large gravel strip on the right of way that there's, there's lots of street parking in the area, so staff does support that. Drawing here. The required front setback is twenty feet. The current home has a setback of, I think it's sixteen foot and one inch. The um, further mo, the closest portion of the second story to the street is using that same setback. However, there is a condition of approval here to require to meet the twenty foot setback. Uh, we've received no public comments on this project. And so in conclusion, staff recommends that the commission hold a hearing, take public comment, discuss and approve the project subject to findings and conditions of approval. However, if the commission does support a setback variance for the front portion of the addition. Uh, it should continue the item to the next meeting so that staff can prepare findings to support that variance and then you can formally approve it at that meeting. So that concludes my report. I'm available if you have any questions and the owner and applicant is here as well.
Is, um, I know a lot of the properties, uh, on William, uh, especially down in the four hundred block are subject to that height. Uh, they have to lift them off the foundation a little bit, a couple of feet because of the flood issues. Um, is that, um, is, are, is this property not subject to that?
Double check then. It, it's, it's not there.
Yeah, I don't think it's.
It's not, it's, it misses it by like, like a hundred feet. Yeah, yeah, okay, because, yeah, because that's just a concern, you know. Yeah, yeah, you know, you know, the history of that whole area, of course, it was built on a big poultry farm. Well, it was actually a marsh and then a poultry farm. And one of the big problems, of course, I lived on four thirty William. And it used to flood like two, like right up to the the baseboards like consistently. And black fungus, you know, from all the poultry grew there. So it's a great thing that they're lifting those on the other side, but uh, it's good that they don't have to lift it.
I had a question about the two trees, but I'm, are you, are you the applicant? Yes, I think what I'll do is I'll wait for you to make your presentation and maybe I can ask at the end or ask you. So there was a tree at the front and there's a tree which is in the neighboring property, but it's very close to your property. So I just wanted to know if they were going to be affected in any way, what the plan was with those two trees. Okay, any other questions for staff? Okay, um, in that case, would you like to come up and present? Thank you.
I just want to preface this by thank you for, uh, waiting through this meeting. It's nine o'clock. And thank you for bringing us, uh, plans. Before the project has been constructed.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. My name's Brett Ashworth, um. One of the owners of two oh six William Avenue. And yeah, as Alex mentioned, looking to do a second story addition. We're not going to expand the footprint of the building at all. Same materials on the exterior of the building. And, um. Yeah, there are a couple corrections, a couple. Edits, I guess, would be the floor ratio of the main house. That we're looking to put the addition on will be point four nine, right? So when you add the ADU in the back. Or when you convert the existing structure in the back to an ADU, the non-conforming structure to an ADU, that pushes it up to the number that was shown on the screen. So. That's. You know, point four nine, number to keep in mind for the main house. And, um, what of the setback on the dormer in the front? It's actually set back off the, the main house is set back twenty feet from the street. Sixteen point one from the front property line. Which we know now because we got a survey done. And, um, the second story is pushed back an additional, I think eleven or twelve inches off the front of the house. So there is a setback on the second. Story on the dormer. But the, but outside the dormer, the rest of the second story is set well back off the front of the house. Yeah. Anything, anything else?
Is there a plan to show that? Because I, I, so the, I, I think I need a visual. To just see. Where, how the second story is set back.
A- and when you say dormer, are you talking about the daughter's bedroom? Labeled, okay, yes.
Oh, so that's, but that's an entire room, right? Okay, so as opposed to the dormers we just saw in the other.
Yeah, so it's not really a dormer.
Yeah, or whatever you'd like to call it. I'm not an architect. Not an architect. And yeah, another point, it's well below the maximum height, right? It's only twenty five feet. It's not a, you know, we didn't try to push it up to the max. Uh, side setbacks, one side setbacks. You know, well over the, the, the minimum, or both, both setbacks are over the minimum. The trees. Yeah, or, or. The, the large oak that's shared by our house and the, and the neighbor's house, right? The property line kind of splits the tree a little bit. If I think it's probably. Twenty five, thirty percent on our property and. Whatever the remainder on the, the majority on the neighbor's property. And we won't, we won't be. Cutting that tree at all, right? I, none of the main branches will be impacted. There may be some, there may be one, now that the story poles are up, you can see it may be one. You know, half inch wide shoot. Kind of penetrates or brushes up along the story poles. So, I mean, very minor ruining.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. And it's one at the front as well.
Yeah, the, the front one's well outside of any area of construction. Right, um. Yeah, there, I don't think any soil. Right, we're not. We're not scanning the footprint of the home. Right, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, yeah, we like the trees, we want them to stay.
Brett, is this a design build for the builder design? Uh, do you, do you have an architect?
Yeah. He's an architect, but we live in the home now, so I've been looking at it and working with the architect very closely to. Try to make it cost effective.
So who's your architect? Is that Nest Built?
Nest Builder would be the general contractor.
Yeah, so who's your architect?
Architect is a gentleman named Yazir, a friend of a friend.
Oh, there it is.
Just out of curiosity, you have a room that's labeled as storage and also labeled as bedroom number one is. Sheet A eleven, it's bedroom number one.
On the, on the second floor?
Yeah.
Yeah, like good, good catch. Um, in that room, there'll be a drop ceiling. Right, with the, with the access for storage. So there'll be. Right, the second story is a vaulted ceiling. Uh, but in that room, there'll be a drop ceiling that we can.
How dropped?
I don't know. I don't know if it's called out in here. I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
Just, yeah, just remember code, so.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Yeah. It doesn't have a closet is, that's the other reason it made me wonder what, what it really was, but.
The number of bedrooms in the house is, you know, if you said five, it's a little, I would say. Three or four max. Uh, there's a master, the daughter's bedroom, and then there'll be one on the, in the ground floor. Right now, the home doesn't have a dining room. Or indoor, the kitchen is, uh, very compacted. So it's a little bit of. Fixing those issues. And then the, the, the room with the storage in the second story would be more like an office per se.
Are the grandparents living with you? Are they, this is just, they're coming to visit?
No, yeah, thank you for bringing that. That, that was supposed to be in my intro. Yeah, so we're expanding the house because, you know, it's growing family. And then my parents, um, they're aging and the plan, and they live in a cold climate. And the plan is to have them stay with us for extended periods of time. That's the main objective. To this, their health, yeah, you know, they're, yeah.
Okay.
Just one last sort of thought. You might consider adding a dormer in the back. Just to add more interest, but, um, make sure you go through the permit process.
We'll do, thank you.
Uh, I don't know, maybe Brock should comment on it. Some of the houses, so this is an architect thing that I. Noticed when I was driving around the, the site or, you know, around the neighborhood. A lot of the other houses seem to have the second floor like built into their, to the roof form with dormers providing window access. With this one, we've got kind of one. Big dormer, you know, the second floor. That has like a face at the front. You know, I, I guess I just wonder if there's a way that you could sort of mimic those other houses in the area, if you've explored that at all, or maybe you have thoughts on that.
Yeah, I, I had similar thoughts. That would be nice to articulate the, the second story a little. With a little more interest, but. So I came, you know, I worked as an architect there and built probably twelve houses and Heather Gardens. And at the time, the planning commission had this layer cake theory of architecture. Um, where you brought the roofs back to the second story and. Uh, it was very difficult to get them to change their minds. And there's much more sheer architecture, if, if you can call it that. Uh, that's been allowed in Heather Gardens recently. I, you know. I, I, again, in the best of all worlds, it would be nice to have more articulation because it's just more interesting. I mean, it's not. You know, it's similar to other houses too.
And staff does actually recommend that they, uh. Reduce the upper floor back or step it back. And it sounds like, if I understand this correctly, that. If we didn't grant the second, if, if they stepped it back enough, so we wouldn't have to grant the second variance. You, we could approve it tonight. Is that my understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so it might even be quicker if you did that.
We stepped, we, we were trying to find the right balance, right? The, the, the quote unquote dormer is born out of. There's a structural wall below the, if you're looking at the house, the left side of the dormer, right? So to build it cost effectively, it's, you know, utilize that structural wall and bring it up into the second floor. Then you can just, you know, underpin. There's a little section in the foundation there where you can just kind of beef it up a little bit. So it's cost effective. You know, it's a little bit of a cost effective design. And, and we said, hey, at first we had it flush with the front of the house. We said. That's not okay. So we pushed it back to, I think, eleven or twelve inches off the, the first story to give it a little bit of.
That, that helps. Also, just out of curiosity, are you on a hollow concrete block foundation like most of the houses in Heather Gardens?
There's sections that have poured concrete. And part of the structural plan is to fill any. Fill any hollow bricks under, obviously, it makes sure any of the hollow bricks under the sheer walls are filled with concrete.
Yeah.
And beyond, and beyond. It goes.
Partly why you're seeing these houses being raised is because the foundations, uh, second stories are very difficult to support on those foundation systems.
Anything is difficult to support with modern building codes.
You take the sheer, take the drywall off. Pour holes through the sill plate, fill the, yeah, it's, and then expand the footing underneath. It's a bit of work.
But just to go back to this, this variance that you're asking for on the second, for the second story. If the, the, if it's a set, if it's a twenty foot setback and you're only, you're asking for seventeen feet. So it's only three feet that you would have to move it by, so we could, we could. Not require the variant, you could have it approved tonight. And it would help with FAR exception is my assumption, right?
Oh, I missed the preceding sentence.
I was just looking at your recommendation of, 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 um. Well, it's not, it was just a comment that was in here about. And, and also listening to what, um. Commissioner Wag stuff have to say about having the kind of like a layered. Articulation going up, that if they, it's only, they're asking for a three foot difference, right? So they would have to, so to avoid the variance, the second variance that they're asking for the, for the second story, they would have to. Push back the second story by three feet. Is that my understanding, right? And if they did that.
And just the dormer.
Just a dormer.
Right.
Everyone keeps calling it a dormer. You mean the girl, the daughter's bedroom? Yeah.
Daughter's bedroom.
Yeah, and then that would be, right, so you would lose three feet from that, but. That would have some impact on FAR or not hardly anything.
Probably not much.
Not much. Twenty feet. I, I was just curious, thirty feet.
You know, I think Heather Gardens really, it ought to be changed to a fifteen foot front yard setback because.
Tried to do that some.
I thought, I thought that was.
I thought we tried to do that, yeah. Didn't we do something?
The only. The only, uh, I mean, I play devil's advocate here, and the only problem with pushing that back three feet is. Again, not being an architect, it would, and Brock can back me up on this, is that you would have to. Put a, probably a, a beam underneath that to support that, yeah. I mean. Um, otherwise you would.
You're still gonna have to do that. It's held back, but, um. There's not a lot of room to push it back, to be honest, and I don't think it buys you that much.
Okay, so if we, if we're gonna let them, if they're going to keep it in, we have to. You're gonna have to come back, right? Is that my? You're gonna have to come back, right? Is that my understanding?
On that front, if you choose, you you could make verbal findings in the affirmative, I just. We just discussed it almost.
Consistent with Heather Gardens setbacks or something.
So so we don't have to do what you've just.
It would be, it would be okay, I mean, you need to. Yeah, we'll have it.
It would be sufficient to have it in the record, okay, I just want to be clear because I'm obviously being a lawyer, I did read everything and so. Yeah. Yes, so how are you gonna get around the noticing?
I mean, we could, but there's no one here to complain about this one, I don't think it would be, it's on the agenda, like it's.
Okay, but you're not gonna fall afoul of the noticing requirements to the neighbors.
Technically, we could renotice it, but I don't know that anyone would care if you approved it as part of the other variances that are already requested.
Well, I will defer to your expertise on this.
This one already had. This one had other. Oh, it had, it has variances because it already has a parking variance, so I don't think it's. Extreme if you were gonna approve the setback variance as part of this.
So for the other variances, so. Um, setback variance, it sounds like with without sort of a complete redesign. I I kind of agree, it doesn't buy much, it's set back a little bit. You're still gonna see that face um of the gable. Whether it's set back another foot or two or three.
That true?
Or not.
Um, I think you'd have to set it back a fair amount to make.
Make a difference.
Make a difference, um, it's still gonna be a tall base. Because the roof slopes are, what is that, four and twelve or something like that? They're they're not very steep, so they don't cover quickly. So it's gonna. It's gonna.
Could you make this the the sill height like four feet for us? I'm just kidding.
We could, yeah.
Um, so the other variances, um, the the parking. Um, personally, I think this is again pretty typical of Heather Gardens is the garage has been converted at some point, and there's one parking spot. Um, at this property, there seem to be kind of a lot of parking on the other side of the street, so. A little bit unique in that regard. Um.
We've expanded the driveway as well, so you can technically, it's twenty feet now, right? So we can fit two cars in there technically.
Okay.
You can even park on the fake grass, right?
Yeah, you could do that too, you could do that too.
Do we have any more questions to the applicant? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, well, there's no one else in the room, but is there anyone on Zoom that would like to make a comment?
If you're on Zoom and you'd like to make a comment, please raise your hand.
No one, okay, great. Um, I think we've heard a lot of comments tonight, but let's have everyone thoughts formally for the process. Um, now that you're back, Commissioner Wagstaff, would you like to start?
Okay, um. I think there are ways that it could be made more interesting, the house, but it probably doesn't matter particularly. I think the back of the house is pretty sheer and pretty tall. Um, and you could have, again, you know, what, you could have a dormer there, but um. Uh, it's not, it's sort of typical for what was done for a lot of the houses in Heather Gardens. And uh, I guess I can make findings for it.
Is it visible the back of the house from anywhere other than the backyard? No.
No, I went around. Uh, not really.
Okay, I couldn't see it.
Because of the other houses on Heather Gardens.
Right, back up. Can't see it, okay. Okay, Commissioner Swisher.
I agree with Brock, it looks very similar to a couple of houses already built in Heather Gardens. Now, it's gonna be that the the one on either side of you um are still gonna be one story. And but, you know, chances are they're gonna do something too at some point. Um, across from you, um, that house was done around nineteen or two thousand and one. Um, Todd and Susan built that house on the other side, and it's pretty big, I mean, so it's consistent with uh.
I designed that house.
You, I know you did, I know you did. Um, um, yeah. Um, so I think it's consistent with the area and what's happening with Heather Gardens. So I can make the findings and approve the variances, definitely the parking and the setback, et cetera, I have no problem with that.
Thank you. Commissioner Campbell, yeah?
Um, yeah, I generally echo. What we've heard so far, the 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 parking variance. That seems consistent with what we've done in the area and the setback variance, the setback seems consistent with what we've done in the area. Um. I guess I do wish there was a little bit more. I didn't notice, or it's not shown, I don't know which one, probably I didn't notice that there was a setback a little bit of the. The the. Daughter's room. Um, so that that helps, I think. So anyway, the I I think that, given that it's consistent with with what's in the neighborhood, I can make the findings for that variance. Um, the floor area ratio, it. It seems high on the face of it, but it's a relatively small lot compared to the. Other ones in Heather Gardens, which which already have relatively small lots. Um, and. You know, some of the minor changes that we've discussed don't seem like they'd have much effect on that. Um, so I think, given that it's pretty consistent with. The rest of the neighborhood, I can make the findings too.
Thank you, Commissioner Hall.
Uh, yeah, I. I can also make the findings, I thought it was, it was comical to me, I went to look at it Sunday afternoon and stopped and parked and got out. And somebody was walking by and they're like, they're like, are you here to look at at this house? And I said, yes, and they said, it looks good. And I was like, okay, thanks, it kept walking. So um, you may not have gotten any comments officially, but I got that one while I was uh stopping to look at it. Um. As we've all talked about, the setback variance, the parking variance, that seems to be pretty standard. The FAR for Heather Gardens, all of that is, we see that, I think, pretty consistently. And um, I was kind of surprised that it wasn't being built, second story also being built on what used to be the garage. I was like, this is not that very, you know, if it was me, I would have made a much bigger second story. So. I can make the findings for it as presented.
Thank you very much, um, yeah, and I I agree, I mean, I would have gone with staff's recommendation to to push back the second floor. But my commissioners clearly don't agree, so. Um, I don't think it's that big a deal, so we can, I think we can go ahead and make a motion. If someone would like to do that, you wanna try?
No, I did the last one, it's it's a.
Is it my turn?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we approve project. Number two, four dash zero, four, six at two oh six William Avenue, APN zero, two, one dash one, seven, two dash one, five. And that includes the. Design review, the floor area ratio exception, the parking variance and the setback variance.
Do you want us to make any reference to the second variance? Do we have to say any special wording for that?
Of approval?
And the one on page six? And the setback variance?
I mean, you could say it was for the reasons as stated by the commission at the meeting tonight and then modify. Is it condition six?
It's condition, it's on page six, it's condition, isn't it?
Six is exterior lighting.
I'm sorry.
It's setback variance.
Oh, here it is, remove condition eight. In planning permit conditions.
All right, so I amend my motion to include removing condition eight. For the setback variance for the reasons discussed by the planning commissioners.
I second.
Right, can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Fisher Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
The motion carries unanimously, and there's a ten day appeal period, any member of the public can appeal the decision by filing. An appeal within ten calendar days with the city clerk and paying the appeal fee.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
How old is your daughter? She's five, I have a six year old. That's cool. Wonderful, thank you.
Yeah, best of luck.
Good luck, yeah, a great neighborhood.
Okay, um.
Yeah, good.
So we haven't received any materials on the annual.
No.
So we.
I was going.
So are we gonna?
No, yeah, no, there's nothing for you to review for that.
Okay, so next. Okay, we'll close the public portion and we'll. Uh, move on to business items, so we were gonna suggest that we um. Um, what's the word? I'm tired.
Continue?
Continue, thank you, the uh approval of the minutes in the next meeting, unless you wanted to discuss that tonight.
No.
I actually had. An additional further changes to the.
Gotta make sure that they meet your.
It was, it was, no, it was in relation to the comments that were made by the owners of the Lucky Site. I feel that they really, that was, a lot of questions get asked about that. So I feel that we need to really accurately um. Address what was said in the meeting, so. Sorry to be pedantic, but um. And then uh, moving on then to electing the chair and vice chair of the planning commission, we discussed this last week. But a couple of weeks ago, but not all of us were here. And my time has come to step down. I've been on long enough, although I've enjoyed it, um. So uh, my vice chair is Commissioner Swisher. Who I guess we will nominate to be chair. Is that, do we need to make a motion or how does that work?
Yeah, make a motion, that'd be great.
I move that we promote. I move that we promote the vice chair, Commissioner Swisher to chair.
I'll second that.
Do we need to vote?
Or, yeah, call Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher? Sure. Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Hall, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Ash is an amazing woman and an amazing lawyer, definitely, and she's done an incredible job, and there's no way. There'd be a detailed in her parsing of. Legal ease and these kind of things, I'm a minimalist, as you probably know. Uh, and.
Meetings will probably be a lot shorter.
We can make the findings for that, you can make the.
I'm sure classes you can take and.
Maybe we can recommend send him to the planning commissioners, what is it?
Academy.
Academy, thank you. And then for vice chair, um.
Uh, I will make a a motion that.
Commissioner Campbell?
Nominate Commissioner Campbell to vice chair.
I'll second it.
And then can we have a roll call for that?
Commissioner Wagstaff?
Yes.
Commissioner Swisher?
Yes.
Commissioner Chalmers?
Yes.
Commissioner Hall?
Yes.
And I guess Commissioner Campbell?
Yes.
That motion carried unanimously too.
Great, so can I take a vacation?
You had to stop taking vacations.
We've had, we've had some doozies lately.
I know, they've been hard, so I have to say this was a particularly hard one tonight.
Yeah.
All right, um, do we have?
I have to say, it was. Interesting sitting in the audience and particularly sitting next to Nick.
Nick, yeah.
Who's charming. Nick, just leave me alone.
I have no Nick.
Oh, really?
Um, do we have any uh planning commission, oh, so just to clarify, so as of the next meeting, we'll have the two new positions.
Correct.
And you will re. Read justice on the podium, right?
Okay. And then we have one item that's ready to go on that meeting, plus we have the general plan and report that will come back. Um, but and then the minutes, um, but there is time with only those items if anyone wants to discuss anything just informally like.
I think that they are eleven.
That would be um.
What did we pass? Passed something for Heather Gardens already.
You would, you discussed it and there was never, there was, you discussed it.
Yeah, I thought we passed.
Some concerns were expressed and and one concern, that might be worth discussing again, I could bring what the comments were if you wanted to talk about it more.
I thought we passed twenty down to fifteen.
No. I don't believe so, but I'll I'll pull up those minutes again.
Are they not in the minutes that we have unapproved?
Let me double check, because I I for some reason was under the impression that that was a.
Or that maybe there's direction to go, let me double check.
Okay.
I think maybe there might have been direction to go in that direction, but then there's been, uh, like I know in my own mind. I've thought of a lot of unintended consequences of doing that because you may not be able to review the projects anymore, so. Like one of the, I, even if a project meets a variance. At least it comes here so you could consider the design, once you do the fifteen feet, people could just build their house right up to fifteen feet. Without having to come through to you.
And do you get in trouble with other communities, other areas that have, are stuck with twenty feet?
I don't, I don't think.
Riviera Circle has it has a.
We did discuss that, it's just, um, yeah, Riviera Circle is another one that has pretty common setbacks, but once you. Once you make it less than now the house is conforming, they may not, they might not come to you for a project anymore. So you, which is fine if you don't care, but someone could be building two stories right up to the fifteen foot without any review.
I have to say, I I think I've talked about this with maybe with Helen Hycamp way back when. Um, and she felt it gave the commission more options relative to the what they're approving.
By not changing.
By not changing it.
Okay.
Because it is a variance and it allows you to make. Changes to plans that come before you that wouldn't, maybe wouldn't otherwise.
The the one thing I think we do need to address, because we've talked about this for so long, is the FAR exception on slopes. Even if we're not gonna do anything on a piece of flat land. When it comes to a slope, I think we've all acknowledged that it doesn't make sense.
Because it's too too small, it makes it, it starts unrealistically too low.
Yeah, maybe we could look, we could look at just having a a floor, like a a bottom.
So if we can't. If we're not gonna be able to address the entirety of the FAR, at least we can address it on slopes.
As a bottom, a floor for them.
Yeah, I feel like that might be low hanging fruit that we can address. But I would like to look at the whole concept of FAR, and I know at one point you were going to come and look, look at some other jurisdictions.
Meeting, next time I'll have that.
Yes.
Talk with.
Because it could be in.
Coramadera.
An informal conversation just to get a starting point.
Fantastic, could we have it on the agenda then?
And then not with a lot of prepared material just for informal discussion about it and whatever ideas, that'd be a good place to start.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, Elise, do we need to continue the annual report?
Um, it's okay, we could just re-put it back on the agenda.
All right. Um, in that case, should we have a? A motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn this meeting.
Well, I think we can all say.
In favor, right?
Yeah.
Aye.
Aye.